Clock on the wall says six o'clock, so it's time for the March meeting of the City of Beaver Creek Planning Commission. And we will start, since I've already called to order, we'll start with a roll call.
Ms. Akers?
Here.
Mr. Height?
Here.
Mr. Loftus?
Here.
Mr. Schreider?
Here.
Mr. Self?
Here. And before we go any further, we want to welcome Alex Height, our latest member, coming to us from several years on the BZA. And we will also bid a fond farewell to Chuck Curran, who has moved on, if not up, but at least on, to city council. And so we have a new member with us, and welcome back to everybody else. So with that, we will approve the agenda for this evening. Staff, any additions, corrections, changes? I see something coming.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Really quickly, under the decision items, PUD 97-3, mod 218, soy medical center, the applicant has requested that that case be withdrawn at this time.
Okay, so the medical center surgery expansion will be withdrawn. Okay. So if you're here for that, you can go home. That leaves us with two public hearings and a decision item. Any other changes? Good on that. I don't think we need to vote on that, so we will just move on. Since this is the first meeting since new appointments, we do a reorganization every year, which means we choose a new chair and a new vice chair. So I will open the nominations for chair.
I would like to nominate myself.
And I need a second.
I second that nomination.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. I guess I meant again. Now, we need a vice chairman, since Mr. Curran is no longer here. I need a vice chairman, and I'd like to open the nominations.
I make a motion for Nick Loftus as a vice chairman.
Okay, I have a motion for Nick.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, and any others? Okay, we'll close the nominations and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Philly Sidanes, congratulations. Okay, with that out of the way, let's approve the minutes from the February meeting. We may have a little problem with this, since we have a new member and two of us that weren't here, so legal eagle, how do we do this? We only have two people who were here.
Well, technically, I don't know. Yep, microphone. Technically, if you watched it, read, and/or at least made yourself familiar with what's in the minutes, you could still vote on because you're voting, even though you weren't there. I have recommended our new member not, just abstain with respect to this. But for those of you who are members, since you weren't here, but you certainly know and can look at the, you know, have read the minutes and understand, so if it looks good, all you're doing is approving it. You're not really approving any actions or anything. That was already done.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Like to keep it all legal and shipshape. So, any additions, corrections, changes to last month's minutes? I need a motion for approval, please.
Mr. Chair, I motion to approve the minutes from February 7th, 2018.
I have a motion. Is that, are you waving your hand as a second?
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and we have one abstention.
Abstain.
Okay. Now that we have all that out of the way, we can go on to the first public hearing. That's PC 18-4, AS Properties, and it's in Asra.
This is case number PC 18-4, an Asra detailed site plan on an application filed by Mark Plavik, 1942 River Ridge Drive, Spring Valley, Ohio 45370. The applicant requests an administrative site plan review and approval in Asra for one acre of land to construct a new medical office building. The property is located at 4016 Indian Ripple Road, further described as Book Three, page 10, parcel 215, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, the way we do our public hearings is first we will ask for a presentation from the applicant. Once that's done, we will have a report from staff. Once that's done, we'll open the floor to public input, and we ask you to take three minutes and no longer. And once that's done, then we'll close the public hearing and discuss it among the Planning Commission members. So is there someone here representing AS Properties? Don't be shy, you don't have to argue over it.
My name is Stephen Butler. I'm with Community Civil Engineers, working with Mr. Plavik, who is in the audience, and also Mr. Kevin Scott, who is the design-build contractor. We've submitted and worked with city staff, done a couple of modifications to the drawing. Essentially, we're just looking to put a medical building. We kind of did this project a couple of years ago, two and a half, three years ago, where we came through the same process. We were, there's an existing structure on the site. We were going to try and keep it two and a half, three years ago. This time, we've just made the proposed building a little bit larger, eliminating the existing structure. We, everything's pretty much very similar. We have the parking for the use and all the utilities and everything. It came out pretty straightforward, as you can see in your packets. So really, if you have any questions on the design side, just let us know.
Okay, I'm sure we will. Thank you. Staff?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. The case you had before us, PC 18-4, it's the AS Properties Administrative Site Plan Review and Approval Process. The applicant, again, asking for approval for a detailed site plan to construct a 6,300 square foot medical office on one acre. Project located in South Beaver Creek, just northwest of the intersection of Dars and Indian Ripple Road. Here's a better close-up view. Right now, it's all part of a 3.8 acre property. It's a very narrow, very long property, has 160 feet of frontage on Indian Ripple Road, but goes back over 1,000 feet. So as part of this process, they're going to be required to get a lot split and create a one-acre lot, because back in 2014, we rezoned just the front one acre, which is Zone 001. It's got residential to the west and to the east. To the south is the Robbs Beer Barn, which is directly across from Speedway, which will be under construction this summer. Again, the property is Zone 001. This map wasn't updated, but this 001 district was extended through this property. Ultimately, to the north is the R1A, and then there's 001 to the west, and R1A to the east, and B2 to the south. Seen here is the proposed site plan. Again, this is Indian Ripple Road down here to the south. They've got one access point. And as part of this lot split that I was talking about earlier, we're going to require a access easement, about 35 feet wide, access and utility easement all along this western edge of the property line, and ultimately all the way up to the northern property line, because again, we're splitting that one acre off, that would create a landlocked parcel back there with no access except through this 35-foot access easement. So that's one requirement that's in your resolution for your consideration this evening, and also will be on the subdivision if this is approved. Again, they have one access point, and then they're proposing to have 31 parking spaces, and because it's a medical office, the requirements are one, are three spaces for every one exam room, and then one for each employee on the largest shift. The calculation that comes out that they need 29 parking spaces, they show 31, so they are above the minimum. Also, with handicapped, based on our resolution and our zoning code, they're required to have two for parking lots of this size, and they're showing three, so they do go above and beyond the minimum ADA requirements. In terms of stormwater detention, this is a site plan that didn't show grading on it, but basically, they're going to create a stormwater detention pond here on the property that's just to the north, and a little bit on this property. And so when we do that subdivision, they're going to have also a stormwater detention easement. And that, I mean, this owner owns the property, so there's no problem, you know, there's no problem getting that easement, there's no problem of them maintaining that stormwater detention pond or creating it to begin with. Seen here are the proposed architectural elevations. They're proposing a 63-foot wide, 132-foot long building. It's oriented north and south. They do have a glass entryway feature on the south elevation of the entrance of the building. The building is constructed primarily of a red brick, red and beige brick, and then they do have a stone base that wraps the entire base of the building. It's 26 feet to the peak of the building, so it's about 20 feet or 18 feet to the center line of the gabled roof, which is how we measure gabled and pitched roof structures. Seen here is the proposed landscape plan. One thing that we had them add in when we reviewed this initially was extra landscaping here along this southern parking lot, because there is residential here to the east, so we wanted to make sure that cars coming in and out of this parking lot, should they come in during times when it's dark out, you know, their headlights aren't shining onto the neighbor's property to the east. So we did have that extra landscaping, and obviously, the proposed landscaping plan that they provided shows that extra landscaping. A few of the selected conditions in your resolution for consideration. One is that they didn't have any wall signs or ground signs with this application, but should they come forward and want a ground sign, they're going to have to meet the 001 requirements, which is a four-foot tall maximum, 30-square-foot sign, and it can't be within 50 feet of any residential structure, and one wall sign for a total of four square feet. So their wall signs limitations is pretty small. Also, one requirement is they don't change the exterior of the building without Planning Commission approval, so that if they want to change the color, they can't just go paint it on their own accord, they need to get prior permission. And also, this was important, exterior construction, because there's residential to the west and to the east, you know, we wanted to limit residential construction between 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, so that they're not out there at 3:00 in the morning, you know, framing or, you know, dump trucks or anything like that. So there is that requirement as well. Staff does recommend approval of requests of this applicant's requests, and I'm happy to answer any questions following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Your usual extremely thorough report makes it easier for us. Okay, since this is a public hearing, I will now open the floor for input from the public. If you would, please limit yourself to three minutes, and if you want to go longer, someone will have to donate their three minutes to you. So step up, give us your name and address, and have at it. Don't be shy.
Hi, my name is George Rushell from 1884 North Longview, and I only got one concern. They haven't mentioned anything about pedestrian access or sidewalk around the property, and I would like that to be addressed, and also to be within ADA standards also. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point. Others? We have anyone else who wishes to speak before I close the public hearing? Last chance. I'll close the public hearing, and I'll ask our clerk if we had any written input on this.
No, we did not.
Okay, no written input. So, I don't want to put our new guy on the spot by having him go first, so we'll start on this side.
All right. I have a few questions for staff.
Yes, sir.
All right, so is there a typical size standard for a structure that is new construction in an 001?
No, I mean, we asked, there's just guidelines that it stay residential, scale and character, you know, this being, I mean, we have two-story houses in lots of places, this is one-story, so, I mean, there's no height requirement. Well, there is, I mean, but they don't surpass that anyways, like 35 feet or something like that.
Okay, so that leads into my next question, then. Is there a size restriction from a square footage standpoint in an 001, new construction versus what's already been?
No.
So to address the sidewalks, was there any existing sidewalks right now along that, along the road?
Yes, when we did a construction in 2013, I say, 11, somewhere, you know, a few years ago, there was sidewalks construction on both the north and the south side of Indian Ripple Road, and then throughout the site, you know, we had them add sidewalks along the parking lot areas, just so when you park and get out of your car. And from an ADA standpoint, they're going to have to follow ADA guidelines when they do construct this site, and make sure that, you know, that you have proper slopes and grading, so it's not out of compliance with ADA.
Okay, so on that site plan, does the sidewalk stay intact where it's at now along the road?
Yeah, I mean, they'll connect to the drive, the drive apron, just like you'd see on several other developments, just like you'd see here, 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 and all along the street.
All right, and then my last question is, is there any kind of size restriction, square footage-wise, being that this is one acre with 6,300 square foot? Is there anything that, I mean, I know we do for residential houses with lot size and things of that sort?
There's no minimum lot size for 001. You know, we require that at least 25% of the site remains open space, a green, pervious surface, and they're above and beyond that with 53%. So, you know, they do surpass that minimum requirement. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Akers, turn.
I have two questions for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, right on point with the pervious surface, that 53%, is that for the one acre?
Right.
That's not for the entire lot?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. And then my next question is, when we're looking at this, and this is in regards to the sidewalks, is there any way, and this may be a better question for the applicant, that we couldn't connect a sidewalk to the existing sidewalk for anyone who may be taking a bus or some type of other travel, so that they have access to the medical building without having to go into the driveway?
I'll leave that up to the applicant.
Okay.
The answer is yes. Just.
I have more questions for you, so you can come up. Thank you.
No worries.
Okay, so we can add the existing sidewalk? That's fine?
We can connect the existing sidewalk with a walkway, whether it's just a hatched area for the, to cross.
Perfect, thank you. My next question is, what are the plans for the remaining back property? Are there any at this time?
At this time, there's no plans.
There are none, okay. My last question is, what type of medical facility is this going to be? And my only concern is the hours.
The hours are eight to five. It's a neurologist, and it's a lab testing center.
You'll need to either come up here or relay it.
I'll let Mr. Play by.
We have folks watching on TV, and they want to hear.
Good to see you all again. So the doctor is an existing doctor that's been a board-certified neurologist since 1989. He's currently practicing in Centerville, and the new practice would open. It's currently in business called Healthy Brain Neurology, and the hours are always eight to 4:30, Monday through Friday. Total number of patients is approximately 15 individuals. Sometimes they come with family, husbands or wives or friends, so sometimes the cars could get a little bigger than a total of 15 during normal Monday through Friday, eight to five in the day. The other thing that we've added since we visited you three years ago is the company LabCorp wants to do some testing, and so there'll be some additional cars coming on the property for that reason, in the hope of the growth of this particular building. It's a little bigger than we talked about three years ago, so we have a plan for a second provider, whether it be a medical doctor or nurse practitioner, and therefore there will be a little bit of growth beyond this number of 15 per day. But again, we're thinking we're always going to be below 30 per day, so you're asking, again, a very specific question, but there's 30 total cars coming in and out of the property. Again, we're trying to accommodate that. We also have a plan for the future, and so part of the one acre could be expanded on. That will be shown with other dotted line things on the drawings as we continue to present them to you, but it's all going to be within advice we're getting directly from the planning department. And if there was any change to that size of the 6,300 square foot, there would be, again, potential dotted lines for other additional parking spots to accommodate any other, for instance, if there was an additional exam room or some other purpose, there would be additional parking, again, added on that one acre.
Okay.
Another good question that did come up was about the future, and we have not made any commitments with anybody, so there's really no plan, other than probably we're going to grow some blueberries about 1,000 feet behind the building, because that's big for healthy brain support.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Loftus?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just got two quick questions for Mr. Burkett.
Yes, sir.
So, there was the two questions I have. I see there's a handicap space to the north.
Right.
Does that make sense to move that space into this main area here? The reason being is this is going to be an easement, and people moving in and out typically are going to be, can be potentially at a slower pace, moving in and out of vehicles, and if that's going to be an easement for through traffic, would that make sense to maybe move that to that main?
We did have them add a sidewalk, so that when they get out, they can get on the sidewalk, but then there's also going to be LabCorp, another testing here. We want to make sure that this back entrance has a handicap spot as well. So it's just kind of spreading them out between the two entrances of the building.
So, okay, so there's not going to be one main entrance, it's going to be multiple?
Be one main entrance, but then there's also secondary entrance.
LabCorp will have their own separate entrance, okay. All right, that makes a little bit more sense to me, then. And the other question I had is, why are we requiring them to subdivide the lot?
They only rezoned the first one acre. It had to do with our land use plan back when we rezoned it, you know, the front, the first acre along the main, the commercial corridor was land used as commercial or office, and the remaining two and a half acres, 2.8 acres stayed, it was still residential on the land use plan, so they only rezoned the first one acre. That's why we wanted to split that off.
So if they wanted to build anything?
They'll have to go through, either single-family residential back there, or rezone the property. Come to this board.
Perfect, no, it looks like a great plan. Appreciate your input. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Mr. Height?
Mr. Chair, I'm good to go.
All right. Thank you. I have a few questions. It just wouldn't be the same if I didn't.
That's all right.
Since we're basically creating a landlocked lot with the back two-point-whatever acres, are we requiring that the easement access is 35 feet? Now, is that the?
Right.
Access is 30, now, is that 35 feet paved or 24 feet paved?
It'd be 25, 24, 25 feet paved, and the remaining 10 for, you know, there was some, it was a matter of making sure we get utilities back there.
Sure.
So if they wanted to put water sewer, and they had to extend it all the way to the north, that they wouldn't be ripping up road to do it. So that's why we extended the easement 35 feet wide.
Okay, now, is that being built to city street standards, or will this be a private access?
Private driveway.
Private driveway, okay. Because I got just a little bit nervous when you said that that could go residential.
I mean, that's what it's sold for now.
Because we're creating a flag lot.
Right.
Without a public access.
Right.
And that's a little shaky from a planning standpoint.
Certainly.
For my fellow commissioners, I would suggest on the landscaping plan that the landscape, landscaping on the east side be extended all the way to the rear of the lot, for the simple reason we've got a row of parking places that will not be screened otherwise.
Oh, back here?
Correct.
Yeah, there was just a distance, and that's where they put in the pond, but I wouldn't see, well, okay, yeah, if you follow that line, that's fine.
See, the first three places are screened by the building.
Right.
But those last, those last three, I think we can put some bushes in there and...
Excuse me, just to support Mr. Burkett, there is existing trees, at least 10 or 15 feet of solid greenery and shrubbery and trees already there.
Okay.
We don't need to take them away, but we'll consult with the planning department on all that.
I don't want you to take trees down, but if they're deciduous, they don't help much in the winter, and we just don't want people's backyards illuminated by headlights.
We'll do, yeah, we'll do 100% check with the planning department on that. We'll never have a see-through space, and we'll test it and do all those things to make sure, yeah, we'll avoid that.
Okay, fine.
No headlights on the neighbor's backyard.
Okay, fine, thank you. Oh, as long as you're up here.
I was just trying to support Mr. Burkett.
I wouldn't let you get away.
He does a better job than I do.
I wouldn't let you get away, but this question is for you, and that is, you are for the nonce retaining ownership of the remaining property to the rear.
I don't know what you mean by...
For now.
So we've discussed it privately, and there are some ideas on the table, but one of the things that's fun about being a citizen and a taxpayer in our fine city is we have good people working for us, and I think there's good people to consult with.
Okay.
So I've done plenty of consulting with the entire team, I think all of the members that I've met, including all that are in the room tonight. I've met them personally, we've had good conversations, and they've given me good direction on how to utilize that three acres, and we're probably not going to put a bunch of homes back, but if I did, or if I wanted to, I'd have a lot of people to consult with first, and we, of course, would ask the planning department from the top to the bottom and get all their opinions, and there's a limit on these things, so that's what's fun. We've already listened to the advice, and so if we all want to wander about what does that mean, there could be a potential application in the future. Let's just say, because the neurologist serves people that are older and sometimes age, let's say there was an idea to throw out a home that helps people in assisted living. You might have three of those little homes, let's say they're each 1,500 square feet. So if you really want to wander and wonder what could happen with those three acres, maybe it'd be something, again, connected to medicine, connected to medical, connected to serving people, but it would be purposeful, and then again, that 25-foot-wide driveway on the west side of the property would be utilized and have to be continued. And again, there's all the exciting parts of development that you have to go through, including the fire department, because you'd want to always have that fire department have service to those new structures or new buildings, whether they're residential or a secondary business office. But again, we had advice from the planning department initially, try to request one acre at a time, so that's what we're doing, and if we come up with another good idea, we'll probably be calling Mr. McGrath first, and he'll tell us what to do second, and then we'll probably have meetings, and all that work will probably preempt another idea, because we, we kind of believe, my wife and I believe, it's always fun to ask what would work first, instead of just coming up with a bunch of wild ideas.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for the question.
Okay. That's about all I have. Second, help, please, gentlemen, and Ms. Akers. No further questions? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Asra PC 18-4 with the attached 18 conditions.
Okay, I have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Why don't we go ahead and read the roll?
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Akers?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes. Motion carries 5-0, and we'll be looking forward to seeing this whole project go forward. Thank you for bringing it in. Moving right along, the Chicken Fingers have returned. This is PUD 541, mod 218, Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers. Once again, this is a public hearing, so if we have representatives from Raising Cane's, which I see we do, come on and tell us about your new site. What did I forget?
Read the legal ad.
I forgot, it, you miss a month and you forget everything. I'm sorry, Melissa.
This is case number PUD 541, mod 2 of 18, on an application filed by Drew Gatliff of 1062 Ridge Street, Columbus, Ohio 43215. The application requests a major modification for 1.17 acres of land to allow for the construction of a restaurant known as Raising Cane's Chicken Fingers, located on the north side of Indian Ripple Road and west of the existing Waffle House restaurant, further described as Book Three, page 7, parcel 3, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Now it's your turn.
I am Drew Gatliff with Raising Cane's, Ohio, 1062 Ridge Street, Columbus, Ohio, and I'm here, we're glad to be back in front of you as we were before, and those plans have yet to come to fruition, so we're very excited to be back in front of you. And I think the application is pretty straightforward where it's located, so I'll let staff do their thing, but I am here to answer any questions that you guys may have after the presentation.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of Planning Commission. Before you, it's an application requesting approval of a major modification due PUD 541. Should you choose to approve this application, it would allow for the construction of an approximately 3,500-square-foot restaurant to be located in the Green approximately 3,500 square foot restaurant to be located in the Green Crossing Development on Indian Ripple Road, just across the street from the Green. Properties located within PUD 541, as I previously stated, that PUD was created prior to the city being incorporated. As you all are aware, we approved the at-home redevelopment of the Kmart site at the end of last year. So that, that was actually, it's near completion. They opened in, in January and they've actually, they're still working on a few things, some final touches, but they are open and they have completed the parking lot and the majority of the, the exterior of the building. So that's a significant improvement on that end. And the 3,500 square foot Raising Cane's restaurant is actually proposed to be just to the west of the Waffle House restaurant, which it will be right here. The Waffle House you can see is right here at that, at the, at the right edge of that photograph. So as the applicant stated, Raising Cane's came to Planning Commission at the end of 2016. A couple of you were already on Planning Commission at that time, so you do remember that application. Originally, it was proposed to be located at Kemp and North Fairfield. Those plans fell through, so the applicant has now chosen this site to move forward with the proposal. As far as the building design goes, it's pretty much nearly identical to what was previously approved by Planning Commission and City Council. As you can see, it's constructed primarily of brick with some Ephesus accents at the entrances as well as at the drive-through windows as well. They're also proposing an Ephesus parapet around the, on the roof in order to screen all of the rooftop units from public view. As I stated, the building design is nearly identical to what was previously approved by the Planning Commission. As far as the access, access goes to the site, it's pretty much just put down right in, in the middle of that at-home parking lot. So there are three, three existing access points. Let me go back to aerial photo. You have the main entrance to Green Crossing, which is at the traffic light here. Then you have a right-in, right-out located here. And then you have the county line access point here. So all those access points will remain. As far as parking goes, obviously there's more than enough parking for this site. The applicant is actually proposing 50 parking spaces with the, based on the square footage and, and the number of employees that they will have, they're only required to have 45. So they are meeting the, the parking requirement as well. They're also proposing four handicap parking spaces and they are only required to have two, so, so that we shouldn't have any issues there either. As far as the landscaping goes, it's pretty, pretty standard landscaping. We have the trees, the shrubs, the tall grasses. It's definitely going to be an additional improvement to that site. There is some landscaping that we're going to work with the owner on. I was actually out there today. Some of the old landscaping is still, still out there and it's, it's, it needs some replacing. So we will work with them to kind of continue that improvement along Indian Ripple and kind of continue the nicer landscaping that Raising Cane's is going to bring in here all the way along that, that whole frontage as well. The applicant did not provide a lighting plan. However, we have added a condition that the city staff would approve the lighting before we release any zoning permits. We're going to make sure that the, that the lights kind of blend well with the rest of the development. Obviously, we don't, we don't want to see the same, the same lights that the at-home has because those are the existing Walmart lights and that just wouldn't make sense and they're outdated and old and Raising Cane's is proposing LED lighting. So we'll just make sure that, that, that they look good, that they blend with, with the rest of the newer lighting just to the east as well. So staff is recommending approval with the 15 conditions in the attached resolution. And if you have any questions, I can answer those following the public hearing.
Thank you very much. As this is a public hearing, we'll go through the same drill I just went through. Are there any folks here who wish to speak in favor of, against, or simply have questions about this particular development proposal? Don't be shy.
Hi, my name is George Russell from 1884, that's 1884, North Longview. And my concern is the same as previous, the previous presentation, as far as pedestrian access and sidewalk and make sure it's all within ADA standard. That includes crosswalk, whatever, paint on the ground pavement. Thank you.
Thank you. Others?
My name is Dan Eisenhower with Flying Ace Express Car Wash, a couple businesses to the west on Indian Ripple Road. And we have visited and seen the development of several Raising Cane's and love the business, love the product. They could be a great fit for the community and we hope it gets approved.
Good, thank you very much. Others? Guess no, maybe? Last chance? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. Did we have any written input?
No.
No written input. Okay, Ms. Akers, I'm going to start with you. Questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually have a lot of questions. And most of them are regarding the design up here, so I don't know who would be best to answer that.
We'll both try.
Okay. My first question is, up in the northeast corner where that dumpster is, it seems to be protruding out into the right-of-way?
Yeah, this, that's actually the concrete. It's, it's this concrete square. It's reinforced concrete for the dump truck so it doesn't crack.
So you can just drive over that?
Yeah, it's not, yeah, it's not, it's not part of the actual structure. Yeah.
Well, these are the doors.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. I see.
Yeah, and the same here. Like it's just reinforced concrete areas where it's heavy. Yeah.
That makes sense. Okay, my next concern is going to be with, I have a lot of concern with these access points. So my first concern is this access point down at the bottom.
Okay.
Of the screen. Yep, that one right there.
Mm-hmm.
And my big concern with that is if anyone has visited a Raising Cane's or dare I say your competitor Chick-fil-A, there are lots of traffic coming in and out. And there is not a lot of room on that entrance point there off of North Fairfield for anyone that's trying to turn left into there. And that intersection is kind of a nightmare to begin with. So my concern is I don't want traffic sitting all the way throughout and backing up.
Well, the.
Is there any concern with that?
What? I, I think most of the Chick-fil-A, not to keep bringing Chick-fil-A.
I know. I apologize.
Chick-fil-A and maybe a lot of Raising Cane's and most fast food restaurants, most their business, I would say is drive-through business. So the drive-through is actually completely separate. So you come through here and then go out this way. So that kind of separates it from every, anyone that would be parking here and kind of, kind of keeps them separate so you don't have a lot of that. Because I think one of the issues with the Chick-fil-A is that it's all, it's all together. Like, yeah, like everyone's crossing each other and, and it's, it's kind of delineated here and separated by islands to make sure that, that it is separate. So I think that, that helps the case here with not being like a, a little bit more chaotic Chick-fil-A.
Okay. My other concern is that northwestern entrance.
This one?
That one.
This one?
Yep.
Okay. That's a one-way only.
Okay, and my concern with that is if people are coming in that one way.
Mm-hmm.
Potentially coming from the home store.
Sure.
And going around to go into the drive-through.
Mm-hmm.
And then you have other people that potentially could be coming in from county line road into that other, from that other direction. Yep.
Okay. This way?
Is there any way, I mean, my concern is that there's going to be backup from the drive-through. And who's going to get the right-of-way? Who's going to get to go first? Is it going to be these people that have been lined up there or is it the people that are lined up on the west side?
These people have a stop sign, so these people would have the right-of-way. So these people get to go first because these people have to stop.
Okay.
Do you want to speak to it? I don't. Go ahead, please.
Just to, to speak to, you know, the, the times when we're, we're really backed up. So when we, when we really have issues with that is during grand opening or for the, what we call the honeymoon period after grand opening. And we do employ traffic control in order for that to happen, whether that's employees or whether that's off-duty police officers in order to make sure that that happens. And we also will work with at-home, since they have a vast parking lot. We will work within that to offload anybody who wants to get in line and extend our line of cars into their parking lot for that temporary while it's really busy. During, you know, normal, after that honeymoon period is over, then it's, it dies down and we, we could expect, you know, anywhere from 10 to 15 cars within our, our drive-through at one time. And this will easily be able to stack 13, 14 of those 15, you know, which would be from the drive-through pickup window all the way through. So we don't anticipate, I mean, if you did that on a regular, you're looking at probably 25 minutes of sitting in the drive-through, which is, it happens, but not often. They usually are able to get them through fairly quickly, especially during peak times.
So in the event that this honeymoon phase maybe doesn't die out during lunch hours, is there the potential to have traffic control out there again?
Yes, so they will be out there until, until the sales volume dies down enough that, that everyone is comfortable with. The last thing we want is angry neighbors and angry customers.
Right.
We, we don't want that at all. And so we know that, you know, if there are accidents that are happening on our property or on adjacent property, that's not good for our business. And so we'll do everything we can to avoid that.
Okay.
Help with that.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have no further questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Loftus.
Um, Mr. Chair, I think at this time I do not have any questions. Ms. Akers asked a couple of them.
Okay, well, go to Mr. Height.
Mr. Chair, just a few. Again, going back to whoever's best answer. Given the aesthetics, right? It's an older lot.
Yes.
Besides the repainting, is there any kind of repavement or because of your leasing? Is it?
Yeah, yeah, they actually repaved the entire, the entire, the entire parking lot has been repaved. The, they put in islands, like the whole thing has been redone, so.
That, I always look at that picture, I'm like, I.
Yeah, this, this is what it looked like. Yeah, so.
But ours, our, our lot, we're not planning to keep any of the, correct on with them, we're not planning to keep any paving. So all the paving is going to be replaced, at least on our lot. And then anything that we, where we're creating the, what I'll call the access drive that kind of is perimeter to us, the, the two-way traffic that's perimeter around our site, anywhere that needs to be filled in, whether that's, which it's been, you know, with at-home, it's been repaired, but anything that would need additional repair, we would definitely take care of for that as well.
Excellent. Uh, second question, what, what hours?
Um, hours are 10:30 to 11:00, Monday through, or Sunday through Thursday, and then Friday and Saturday, I think they're open till midnight. And it, it depends on the location, but those are typical, typically the hours. I think maybe 11:30 or midnight is where it's at.
Great, thanks. That's it, Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Schreider?
All right, I have a couple of questions for staff, I believe, for staff. So on, on this plan right here, on the south side of the Waffle House, you can see where the curb extends out and around.
Uh-huh.
Just on the south side of the building. So it'd be just above your pointer there. Yeah, that curb, how it goes out into the part, into the Waffle House property? See how it?
This way?
Yes, that one.
Okay.
Is, I don't believe that's existing right now, like, on the Waffle House side. I can't be for sure because I can't see it in this picture.
Yeah. I, I don't think there were any proposals for any changes to anything outside of the Waffle House.
It is existing.
That's one of the new canoes, I think.
Okay, that's, that was, that was my concern, that it would just stop and then that wouldn't actually be there if it wasn't part of the plan or not.
Sure, okay.
And then back to what Tiffany was getting at, when, if you're heading east, it would be right out of there.
Yeah.
The traffic line trying to leave this whole development back out to Indian Ripple gets extremely backed up. And if somebody's sitting there trying to make a left turn through all that line of traffic back into the complex, or somebody turning into the whole complex, trying to make a left across all that to get into this access point, would be more of my concern because that's going to back up right there at the intersection of county, or I, I'm sorry, at Indian Ripple and whatever the street is that comes in. Would there be an opportunity in the future, and I don't know how, to put a no-left-hand turn like they have in a lot of places?
Forcing people.
Yeah, force them to go to the back of the lot to get in if they do pull in.
So a no-left-hand turn where though?
So leaving, going, leaving out of that road right there.
Uh-huh.
You wouldn't be able to turn left onto the main ac, not the Waffle House, the next road over.
This one?
No, keep going, right. It's not on this page, right there. That's the main access.
So at the light, okay.
Yeah, at the light, to where you couldn't turn left and clog up traffic there because then Waffle House would be clogged up and it wouldn't be at their, you know.
I mean.
So not that it has to be part of this, but something that we.
I guess I understand it. I understand what you're saying, just on a personal level, I don't know that I would ever try to do that if I was trying to go up to county line. I would, I would just come out this way.
I would agree with you. I'd be more worried about the person that doesn't know that and gets stuck in that and then they have nowhere to go. Because they can't really back up if there's a line, then they're cutting through Waffle House's parking lot. I'm just trying to think of the neighbors and the traffic pattern around there.
Sure.
Would, so maybe not for this. What I'm asking is if there, is there an opportunity in the future, if there is an issue that we can do that through the city?
I think we can, if we, yes, we can keep an eye on it and see, you know, how things work out. And then as, as anything changes with any of these sites, which it, it happens very often, we can, you know, if anyone even wants to do different signage, we can add conditions, say, okay, you guys need to address this right now because it's become an issue.
Okay.
So, yeah, that, yes, we, we can definitely keep an eye on that and, and watch the circulation patterns and see how things go. And I would think and I would hope that, you know, Raising Cane's as well would be like, okay, this isn't, you know, this isn't working. And Chick-fil-A did, pretty much did the same thing. This isn't working, we need to, we need to fix this. So.
Okay.
So, yes, we'll, we'll keep an eye on that and we'll work with them to make sure that, that it works.
All right. And then the last one is on the, if you can go to the elevation page with the signage.
Oops. Yep.
So that, on the top picture, that sign, the left, most left sign, is that?
It's a mural.
Okay, so is that within typical size standards of signs with buildings?
It is not. It's, it's, I mean, we added a condition that allowed it. It kind of, it, well, I think on the original, the previous one that we had done, I think all of this was brick and it kind of breaks up that elevation and gives it a little, something extra. So it's a painted mural. We didn't see an issue with it and since it's in a PUD, we kind of have that flexibility. So we just, we did add a condition that specifically allows the mural as well.
Okay, so any future buildings would have to go through the same type of thing that wouldn't be set up precedent?
Yeah, and I think, I think in the condition that we added for the mural, I think we stated that if Raising Cane's were to vacate the building, the next tenant wouldn't be able to have the mural, so.
All right, takes care of mind. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Don't run off.
Okay.
My turn. I was going to ask about the sign too, because I didn't remember that from the, from the North Fairfield Road. But I can understand why, because if you, if, gentleman, lady, if you remember, Indian Ripple Road is quite a few feet below grade as it goes past this site, and the smaller sign is going to be difficult to see. So I really don't have a whole lot of heartburn with it either. I just, thanks for the explanation, because I didn't remember that on the, on the previous one, but it does make sense. My only other question is, refresh my memory, is there a sidewalk running along Indian Ripple?
There is, there is a sidewalk running along the south side of Indian Ripple. There isn't one along the north.
But not on the north side?
Yeah, it doesn't really make sense to run one along the north, because once you hit past this, there's a huge retaining wall that, so if someone wants, I mean, there's this entire section across the way. Actually, the sidewalk goes up to here and then stops and then continues across the street.
Okay. Well, the reason, the reason I was asking is if there was a sidewalk, it would make sense to extend that south walkway, if you go back to the drawing there, that south walkway.
Down there.
Down to a sidewalk if it was there.
Right.
But there's no sidewalk there, so it just, doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do that.
Yeah.
My other question is, normally when we have a, an outlot like this, in basically in an existing parking lot, there's a standard cross-access parking, cross-access agreement?
Yeah, I didn't address that, but with this case, they are actually not creating a new lot. So it's all, it's just lease lines.
So, so Raising Canes could use the entire parking lot if they wanted to?
Exactly.
And they hope they will?
Exactly. Yep.
Okay, good. That's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your usual excellent, put-together presentation. Commissioners, second helping, anybody?
I did have just one more, sir. Regarding the late-night traffic, do you know anything about, I mean, given, given the other, you know, the greens across the street, there's a Waffle House next door, is there any concerns pedestrian car-wise, the later hours?
We haven't had any issues that I've heard of with, you know, pedestrians or any type of late-night issues with, you know, bars with the green Waffle House kind of thing, so I don't anticipate. And especially if they're not open past midnight.
Thank you very much.
There's no residential nearby either, so they can fry that chicken as loud as they want. Okay, anything else from my fellow commissioners? In that case, I will ask for a motion, followed by a second.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve PUD 451, mod 218, major mod, Raising Canes Chicken Fingers.
With?
With the 15 associated conditions.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a motion, I like a second.
Mr. Chair, a second.
I have a motion and a second. Let's go ahead and call the roll on this.
Mr. Loftus?
Yes.
Mr. Schreider?
Yes.
Ms. Acres?
Yes.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Self?
Yes, motion carries five zero, and we will look forward to Chicken Fingers in our future in Beaver Creek. Yeah, when, just out of curiosity, when do you expect to begin construction once the approval is done by council?
We are hoping in May to be able to start construction, so that would be September, October.
Okay. For those of you watching on TV who may not have heard that, they're hoping to open in October, presuming that City Council approves this. So without further ado, we have one more item, and this is a decision item. It's a minor modification to PUD 4-80.
I have nothing to read on.
You have nothing to, dang, yeah, I was ready for you this time. Okay. It's staff's turn then.
Thank you, sir. The case you have before you is PUD 4-80. It's a renovation to the existing McDonald's out there on Dayton-Zenia Road near the Kroger. Specifically, they're requesting a minor modification to the existing site plan to allow for change to the architectural look of the building. Again, the project's located in central Beaver Creek, just to the southwest of the intersection of Dayton-Zenia and Meadow Bridge. To the west of that is the, this is the canopy for the Kroger parking, or the Kroger Fuel Center. So again, this is the existing site. They have three entrance points to the site, one is an in-only, and then the other two are full-access points. But I just wanted to point out that with this application, they're not proposing any changes to the site itself, it's just merely aesthetics of the building. This is the existing building as it is now. They've got the mansard roof that, you know, we've seen since they built in '78. And what they're looking to do is remove that mansard roof and make it a flat-roofed building. So here's the proposed architectural elevations. What they want to do is paint the existing brick, paint that to a dark gray color, and then where the mansard roof is, just extend that up and make that a EPAS wall. And then, as you can see on the front elevation, which actually faces Meadow Bridge Drive, you know, they've got a red metal panel brand wall and then a, it's like a metal, it's kind of hard to explain, but it's, it's, it's a metal battened surface. I provided pictures of where they've done it in the past. So this is that metal battened surface. And then on the rear elevation, which actually faces the Kroger parking lot, you know, they're looking to paint the existing brick and then add again more EPAS. And you can see on these, they've got the existing downsouts, have added a condition that those be painted to match the adjacent materials so that they're not light gray downsout setting. And same thing with the, there's a roof access ladder and access ladder, I guess, protective screening, and all those need, I added a condition that those be painted that dark, the same dark gray as the EPAS in the brick. On the non-drive-thru side through, which faces Dayton-Zenia Road, they've got, it's a, it's a, looks like stone, but it's a, it's a tile. So, I'm sorry, it looks like wood. It's a wood look ceramic tile that they use on these, they've got on the main entrance there, on the non-drive-thru side as well as, you know, surrounding the two drive-through windows on the drive-through side. On each of the elevations, excuse me, on the front elevation, they show a McDonald's logo, which is about a 26-square-foot sign, and then the McDonald's, I guess, written sign. One condition that we added was that they can't use raceways, that these letters need to be individually mounted. You can see, it's kind of, you can kind of see it on this elevation, they show a raceway where they post a, or they, you know, attach the raceway and then attach the letters to that. And we want to make sure that they, you know, that we have individually mounted. It's just a cleaner look, it looks better. And so we added that condition for the other three McDonald's signs as well, and then they've got the logo sign. Again, this, also, I wanted to show you example of the wood look tiles that they're proposing on this building too. This is one that, our code enforcement actually was on a vacation and saw this down in Middletown. So, again, there's a few selected conditions. Again, the, the letters be individually mounted. One was the facade not be painted or altered without Planning Commission approval. I know that, that boilerplate condition came about because of this McDonald's in particular several years ago was painted without anybody knowing it. Also, if you notice, there's a, there's a metal awning that goes over the entrance on the drive-through side, the windows, and it was not apparent whether that went around the corner, and we saw the way that looked in the Middletown one, so we wanted to add that condition that the metal awning on the northeast corner be extended around the building, so it gives it a, you know, some protruding, just accent features or something like that. So we do recommend approval. This is an administrative approval by Planning Commission, so there's no resolution, and it does not go to Planning, or, I'm sorry, it does not go to City Council. This is administrative action by Planning Commission. There are eight conditions in the staff report associated with this. Again, we recommend approval and we're happy to answer any questions at this time. The applicant is here, I believe, and if they have any questions? If you have any questions for them, I'm sure they can answer, if I can't.
Thank you. Who to end with? I think it's, whose turn is it? It's yours.
I don't have any questions at this time. This seems pretty cut and dry to me, so.
Alan?
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything for you?
No, sir.
Okay.
I have no questions, sir.
Ms. Acres?
Other than this is a great improvement, and all of this talk of food is making me extraordinarily hungry, I have no questions.
Hamburgers or chicken?
Exactly.
Eat before you come to the meeting. I will second Ms. Acres. This is a, this is as nice a-looking McDonald's as I think I've ever seen. It's a real, real improvement, and I see nothing wrong with it. It looks excellent. Nice job, gentlemen, both, both the McDonald's folks and our staff. It really looks good, and I can hardly wait to see it implemented.
Yeah, they're anticipated, just for a note, they anticipate, that was based on approval this evening, if, assuming that it got it, they want to break ground right around the first of April. And it's going to take about five weeks, they said, what, perfect schedule, five weeks, weather permitted. And the drive-through is going to remain open during that timeframe, and there might be some time when the interior is open as well, but, but they're...
So people won't have to, on the south side of Beaver Creek, won't be going through Big Mac withdrawals?
Right, and there's still be the coffee in the morning and your, and the Egg McMuffin and stuff like that.
All right, I have nothing else from our planning commissioners, then I need a motion. And once again, remember, this is one of those places where we are actually legislative, because we are, this lives and dies with us, it does not go on to council. So with that, I need a motion.